Testing.
Sorry about that.
I am ready. We are on and we're recording.
This meeting is being held in conformance with the sunshine law. Notice of time, date, and place has been furnished to the Bergen Record and the Ridgway News. Notice has also been posted on the bulletin board of the administration building. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Brannick?
Here.
Mr. Martinello?
Here.
Mr. Ramondo?
Here.
Mr. Ritchie?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Everyone kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us have a moment of silence for all Waldoik veterans, all veterans across our country who have given the ulterior sacrifice so that we could assemble the way we are tonight and live in a free country. Let us also remember on 11/11/11, the Veterans Day Parade here that will be honoring all our veterans. Clerk, please do a prayer.
Dear Lord, we start this meeting asking for your guidance and wisdom. May we find unity and fairness. The outcome should reflect our wishes to assist the borough in all their endeavors. Thank you in his name. Amen.
When we were setting up this program to honor our going out police chief, I asked Mark to give me a little bit of information about him, which he did. And he sent me a bio about every position he held and then a little bit of everything he did with it. I looked at it and I decided if I read everything, you'll never be retiring on the 31st. So I figured that what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read something to you from the heart. Tonight, I am both privileged and honored to stand before you to speak about Chief Mark Messner, who is retiring from the Waldoik Police Department after 36 years of dedicated service to our residents and community. Mark is here tonight with his wife Patty, who I was told to say she works north of here in the next town. We're not gonna say it's the Florist, but that's where she works, with her three kids, Joseph, Matthew, and Carly. I want to thank Patty for sharing her husband with us for all these years. I know it must have been hard since Mark was always busy doing Waldoik business and you had to be both mother and father at times. At the end of the day, Patty did a great job and we want to thank you. When I first was elected to the Borough Council back in 2005, which was years ago, Mark was appointed the acting chief and soon after became chief in 2006. From the very beginning, it was clear that Mark's leadership integrity and compassion would define his tenure. Over the past 19 years, I've had the pleasure of working closely with Mark. Time and again, he had demonstrated his love for this community, his unwavering services, and his selfless dedication to the well-being of Waldoik's residents and his fellow officers. His decisions might not always have been the most popular ones, but they were always the right ones, grounded in the safety and best interest of our town. In 2016 interview with NorthJersey.com, Mark said, and I quote, "Sometimes it sounds kind of corny, but you want to be a cop because you want to help people." That's what all kids say on their interview, and that's pretty much what I said. He was honored to say, "You want to do something positive and make something bigger than yourself, to help people who need your help. There is no S on your chest. You must treat people with respect, and hopefully they will treat you with the same respect as well." Every day, police officers live by that calling, driven by honor, courage, and a deep sense of duty to their communities. Law enforcement isn't just a career, it's a lifetime commitment to be in there no matter what the challenges are. Mark, you have earned your, you have worn your uniform and badge with pride and with steadfast dedication to Waldoik and all its residents. As you retire, you can look back on your years of service with the knowledge that you truly made a difference and accomplished so much for this community that we all love and we all call home. Mark, cheers to your second act. May it be even more rewarding than the first. Enjoy your new seven-day weekend. Congratulations on your retirement and best wishes as you begin the next chapter of your life. I'd like to ask everyone to kindly stand and congratulate Chief Mark Messner.
And I was told to give you a badge, the official retired badge. And I know Mark is not a man for words, but I'd like just to say on behalf of Mark that he thanks everybody for being here. And at a later date, he'll thank everybody personally, but Mark is a genuinely nice man, and if you get to know Mark, you get to know a good person. We're gonna take about a two-minute break to thank Mark and his family.
Thank you.
Okay, under my report, just a couple of items. On Saturday, I performed the wedding for two residents of the borough here in the chambers. Also, yesterday, we did the Halloween judging contest. I just want to just say one thing about what went on about that. It's a lot of misinformation that was given out. And if you want to know what is going on, talk to me. Don't go on Facebook. I keep on telling you this. I did not judge the contest. I drove around in the car, made sure that people got in the car. The people that judged this were two, a man and a woman, that happened to be husband and wife, that won a raffle with the Golden Club. Tatiana and I went to talk to the Golden Club, and while we were there, we talked about the event. And we pulled two tickets, and this husband and wife won. And they came, they met us last night, and then we picked the younger person. And they were also, she was also here with us. We drove around the town, we looked at the homes. I asked if I could mention their names, and they said they were afraid to do that. That's a shame. But then again, you learn from your mistakes. In the future, you want to know anything, please call me. I have no problem calling you back. I have no problem meeting with you. I do a lot of my meetings in Borough Park. A lot of people know that. So please, you know, you can, I can't tell you not to go on Facebook, but get it from the horse's mouth. That's all I have to report. Financial Administrative Committee, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. No report this evening.
Thank you. Fire and Police Protection Committee, Mr. Brannick.
Just very short. I had a conversation with the fire chief, and we're starting to get some concrete dates as to when we can expect delivery of our new apparatus. And if all goes well, we should have a new piece of equipment in the driveway approximately one year from right now, which is really kind of cool because it was 18 months, 20 months down the road, and the chief was able to shrink that down to 12. I think that's very cool. I have nothing else.
Thank you very much. Recreation Health Committee, Mr. Martinello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be very brief tonight, with Halloween coming up, there's a couple of events going on at the library. On Thursday, October 30th, there's a Jack the Ripper event at 7:00 PM. And also on Halloween, there's Hey Grandma, The House Is Bleeding. There's an event at 2:00 PM at the library. Also, there's an upcoming rabies clinic in Waldoik on November 6th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 at the DPW garage. So get your pets out there for their annual rabies shots. On the recreation front, I know the Waldoik 12U baseball team has their annual Cooperstown drive going, so there's a sponsorship drive out there right now. You can see that on Facebook or on the WBSA website for more information there. And we're looking forward for the winter season of sports to get started here with basketball and wrestling. So good luck to all the winter athletes. And a note for the high school teams who are entering into their fall sports playoff season. Good luck to the soccer and football teams as they go into the state playoffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Mr. Ramondo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Building and Grounds Committee, Ms. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Waldoik Community Alliance for the Ragga Muffin Parade over the weekend. It was a big success. And the kids had a lot of fun and they got a lot of candy. And I really appreciate putting that together every year. As everyone has been able to see, the Lions Park is coming along. Swimming Lane should be done on time. I believe the end of November is the target date. We did an upgrade at the ambulance building. They had the key fobs installed for the membership to enter on the side of the building. And there's been some intermittent issues with their garage door to look into. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. In regards to the ambulance corps, on Saturday, I spoke with Lucas. Is he still here? He must have left. Lucas is the captain. I thanked him very much for being out there the following Saturday. And also, could we speak with him or call him in? It seems that he's paying for oxygen out of their own pockets when they go to a home. And they also use that oxygen for the police when they need it to. And they have to go pick it up. And it's not close. So maybe we could work something out that it could get delivered and, you know, we should be paying for the oxygen for our residents. All right? And if we could just send him an email telling him that we're gonna look into this?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no legal report this evening. However, we do need to briefly go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations. I don't expect that to take very long, approximately 15 to 20 minutes.
Any decision to be made?
No.
Thank you. Our Borough Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to Chief Messner. Thank you for everyone who came out to recognize him and his years of service. We certainly didn't want him to get away without saying thank you, and thank you again for coming out. The Lions Playground, as Councilwoman Weber noted, is coming along well. And we actually, as of today, we're given an update. We think in the next two weeks, it could be, a good chance it could be complete. So to be determined on a ribbon cutting, but that'll be a fantastic new addition to Borough Park for all of our residents and families. The Hudson Avenue curb ramp improvements were just about finalized at the end of last week. That is part one of the improvements to Hudson Ave in terms of the paving that is being anticipated for next year. So this is phase one. Happy to see that the work went along really well, and Boswell is assisting on that project. With that, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. In regards to the park, are we having Waffa go and look at it?
I'm sorry?
Are we gonna have Waffa go and look at it?
They were part of the process leading to the design, I believe, with Steve.
Okay, good, great. Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. General Election is Tuesday, November 4th. Vote-by-mail dropbox is located behind the Public Safety Building. There are signs posted to direct voters to that box on East Prospect Street. It's behind, it's behind the Public Safety Building. Early voting begins, already began, October 25th through Sunday, November 2nd. The hours are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 to 8:00, and Sundays, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Voters can go to any one of the nine locations throughout the county. The two closest to Waldoik are the Woodclip Lake, Tice Senior Center, 411 Chestnut Ridge Road, and the Wykow Public Library, Schottmeyer Room, 200 Woodland Avenue. November 3rd, by 3:00 PM is the deadline for anyone to go to the county clerk's office in person to fill out a vote-by-mail ballot. General Election Day is, again, Tuesday, November 4th. The polls are open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you bring your sample ballot with you, it's quicker, it's a quicker check-in. So if you could do that, that would be great. Also, the sample ballot has your voting district and the location on the front. So if everybody can take a look at that. Also, just a reminder that October 30th, mischief night, curfew is in effect. We have that posted and put in the email blast. I believe it's 9:00 PM for 18 and younger until 6:00 AM the next day, unless they are with a parent. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to note that this evening, on the online and home option to watch the program, we are having an issue with the video, but the audio is working.
Thank you. Consent Resolutions and Resolutions of the Governing Body.
Be resolved that the following resolutions here, with listed by consent, having been considered by the governing body of the borough of Waldoik, are hereby passed and approved as amended to include Resolution 2025-303. 2025-294, approval of consent. Policy votes A. Waldoik Chamber of Commerce requests permission to hold the 18th Annual Waldoik Chamber of Commerce 5K Run on Sunday, May 3, 2026, from 7:00 AM to 11:30 AM. B. Waldoik Chamber of Commerce requests to hang the W5K banner on the fence located at the end of East Prospect beginning April 1st, as well as mounting a 3x5 American flag over the Hopper Avenue Bridge across from the Borough Pool beginning May 1st, and to be removed by May 4th. Waldoik Chamber of Commerce requests assistance of the police, DPW, SER, and Fire Department with the Chamber of Commerce 5K Run and One Mile Walk on Sunday, May 3rd. Angela Gold requests to use Pavilion B on November 29th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM for a birthday party and alcoholic beverages being served. 2025-295, amend a non-fair and open professional service contact, contract with DRG Architects for roofing and HVAC replacement at the Waldoik Police Fire Range for additional services in the amount of $6,000. 2025-296, appointment of Lieutenant Troy Seifert as acting chief of the Waldoik Police Department. 2025-297, accept resignation of George Peterson as part-time electrical inspector. 2025-298, approval of submission of the local government service best practices inventory for 2025. 2025-299, authorizing the reaffirmation of the employee handbook and personnel policy manual and the policy addressing additions to the American with disabilities policy, additions to the policy against harassment, change in language to vacation leave policy, and addition of an acknowledgement of receipt page. 2025-300, authorize discretionary property tax grace period extension during prolonged federal government shutdown. 2025-301, payment of vouchers, and 2025-303, accept the resignation of April vanish as full-time keyboarding clerk want.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept? Motion by Andy, second by Mike. Anyone have a question? If not, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Brannick?
Yes.
Mr. Martinello?
Yes.
Mr. Ramondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, we have no adoption of ordinances. We have no introduction of ordinances. On the unfinished business, any unfinished business of the council. Chuck, I'll be at your place either tomorrow or probably Thursday or, yeah, Wednesday or Thursday, I'll come to you to sign the letter. We'll send out to the company that gave us the pumpkins. Okay? Thank you. Any new business from the council? Yes?
Yes, some new business. The Environmental Committee met a couple weeks ago on Thursday. They're planning on doing some events for next year. Environmental Committee met a couple weeks ago. They're planning on four events for next year to do some cleanups throughout the year. They're gonna reach out to Tatiana to give the dates. Then they also wanted to ask the borough if they could look into possibly stocking the pond with some warm water fish from the Pequest Fish Hatchery up in, I guess, outside the state. See if that's something that's an option, because they would like to possibly do some type of fish catch-and-release program there at the pond. But they think that the trout would be a problem because it's oars not very deep and it's very warm in the summer months. They also would like to go back to another no-mo summer again, and they would like to see if the borough would revisit looking into a water conservation plan with regards to watering during the summer months so that we don't put ourselves in a predicament with the wells. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
About turtles. Turtles.
I'll ask them about turtles.
Like turtles. Any other new business? Yes?
Just gonna congratulate Acting Chief Seifer on that resolution. It's an exciting night.
There's a new policy. The new chief and acting chief have to come to all the meetings. Your wife's gonna love it. She'll get you out of the house. Any other new business? If not, comments from the public. Anybody from the public who'd like to comment, please come to the podium and state your name only for the record. Let me just turn the podium around.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I just fell the other day, so. Hi, I'm Elise Didimo, 162 West Prospect Street. I just would like to read a comment that I wrote regarding the No Kings rally that we had on October 18th. So I'd like to offer my perspective on the events in Waldoik which took place on October 18th, National No Kings Protest. Excuse me?
Is somebody?
I felt immense pride seeing our town and nearby communities come together during the rally. The spirit and camaraderie were palpable, and contrary to some reports, everyone showed respect for public safety by staying out of the street, a fact I can, that can be demonstrated with video or pictures. In truth, I didn't witness any disorder among those gathered. If anything, the only disturbances came from a few individuals, an angry driver burning rubber down the middle of the street, and a woman recklessly driving with no hands on the wheel while making obscene gestures. These isolated moments stand out apart from the peaceful, cooperative atmosphere of the rally. I was especially moved by a wonderful exchange between someone protesting the protest and a participant which exemplified civil dialogue and genuine understanding. And let me reiterate, the streets were left clean, demonstrating care and respect for our community. So I must ask, and the person that I would ask is not here tonight, what was so abhorrent about people lawfully coming together in support of their beliefs? The Constitution, undeniably conservative in its foundation, protects the rights to assemble and speak freely, and the No Kings protest embodied these constitutional rights in a respectful and responsible manner. As we reflect, let us ensure our judgments remain fair and true, even if we disagree with messages. That's what I had to say. I'd also like to thank the local police who did a wonderful job that day, as well as the Fire Department who came out and put the truck, although it wasn't really necessary in my opinion, but that might, you know, have been other, other decisions to be made. But everybody did a wonderful job making sure everybody was safe and protected. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dolores Caneely, 7 Kennedy Drive in Waldoik. I have to write this down because I couldn't remember everything. My husband and I moved here almost 30 years ago to start our family because we enjoyed the Waldoik smallish-town feel while still being close to many larger and diverse cultural experiences. It has been nice to pass neighbors and fellow Waldoikians to say hello even if you don't know them. I was proud that our small town was generally welcoming and accommodating in hosting a peaceful rally for locals as well as folks from our neighboring communities to exercise their First Amendment right to peacefully assemble and express their concerns. As I walked around and heard many people thanking the police for ensuring the rally participants as well as the residents remained safe, and even thanking the DPW who put out cones along the road to further ensure safety for all. Overall, I found the rally to be a positive reflection on the town and the town's people. I observed an orderly, unifying expression of dissent, not a spectacle or a circus. I do have a question that was kind of brought up there. I do have a question that was kind of brought up there, that during the rally, one of our fire trucks was pulled out blocking a main thoroughfare, which happened to be the road the rally was on. So for our understanding, we would like an understanding of why that happened and who made that decision.
So, the Police Department, temporary, or, I'm sorry, Acting Chief Lieutenant Seifert is here, and he can answer that question on behalf of the PD. Sorry.
No, you can stay here, you can stay here. So that, that decision was made by our officer in charge at the scene. The volume of spectators on both sides of the road was getting a little dangerous. It was kind of encroaching into the street. So he felt it was the best to close the road at that point, in case somebody got into the road for traffic safety. So that decision was made at the time by the officer in charge at the scene.
Okay.
Well, he chose to block it with the fire truck. I can't question that, looking back on it. At the time, we were stretched a little thin with the amount of people that were there. So I would make the assumption that the fire truck was the best apparatus to use to block the road at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, so you, so you know, during, during all this stuff, we had different elements coming together. Our administrator was here in Town Hall. The lieutenant that was in charge was on the road. I was asked to stay home and don't come out, so I split home in my garage. And every half an hour, I like my garage, every half an hour, I was getting updates of what was going on. And they said, "If we need to call you or get you here, we'll come and get you." It never happened. I was told about the truck. I asked the same question, "Why?", and I was told the same answer. And the main thing is, as Acting Chief said, it was a caution for safety, nothing else. We did not want to do anything to stop anything, because that's not our place to do. Just like a lot of people said that we should have stopped, that we should have, the limited amount of people were there, we cannot do that. You don't need a permit. You, this is a free country. When I, when I talked this, this beginning of the night about veterans, our veterans are the ones that died so that we could live in a free country.
Correct.
And that's what we are doing.
"I just wanted to speak as a citizen, not as a, somebody running for town council. First, I wanted to thank the fact that I live in a town that protected our First Amendment rights on both sides, to be there and to hold a peaceful protest, which is part of the Constitution and part of our constitutional rights. So thank you very much. I'm grateful to live in a town that does that. I'm also grateful to live in a town-"
Could you talk louder?
Sorry, I'm losing real loud. Sorry about that. I'm also grateful to live in a town, and this has been repeated several times, that keeps the protesters and the counter protesters safe. And I want to thank the Waldwick Police Department, the Waldwick Fire Department, and the DPW for doing so. And so I'm grateful on both sides. Public safety is very important, but so is protecting First Amendment rights. So thank you very much."
Thank you.
Helga Hogstatter. "Recently, a council member posted a letter on the official Facebook page of the Waldwick Republicans where she made a number of claims about the No Kings Protest that occurred on October 18th. These claims included saying that the normally quiet town that echoes with friendly chatter was turned into a circus by radical leftists, and that it was loud, overcrowded, and forced road closures. She also stated that the protest was a mask for disorder, businesses were disrupted, and public spaces were left in disarray. Finally, she called the protest an abhorrent display of extremism. Mr. Mayor, since you are the leader of the community, if you don't mind, I would like to address my questions to you. Did businesses inform you that they were negatively impacted by the protest?"
Nope. Did we hear anything?
In terms of businesses directly contacting us, we were not contacted by any businesses.
Okay.
We know the Burger King grab busy. We know that the coffee shop right opposite, to the right of Rite Aid was busy.
Okay.
Other than that, we just heard from one gentleman that owns a store here near the Dunkin' Donuts, says that at 2:00 his business stopped.
Okay, was that because of the Nixle? I'm not so familiar with the Nixle thing.
What happened is, he's claimed that, I guess he posted it somewhere, that at 2:00 his business stopped because of what went on.
Okay.
That's the only thing we heard. No one else ever came forward. Matter of fact, I got a lot of emails that next day, which would be Sunday, thanking us for making it peaceful, making it not a problem.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Not bringing attention to anything.
Mm-hmm.
And giving everyone a right to speak.
Okay, great. Were there things left in disarray? Was there, did they leave a mess? Did the protester leave a mess?
I wasn't there, but our administrator, she, she drove around, and you didn't see any problems.
No, that, you know, our Police Department, our Fire Department, Walback, and myself, administration, were all present on the day of. There was nothing that needed to be addressed after, just the cleanup of barricades and cones that the borough had put out for safety.
Okay, so basically, were the protesters acting within the law? Were they allowed to protest?
Not a question that we can answer, but if the PD would like to respond, I can-
I can't, can, can the, what, is that in protest?
What was your question again, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Were they allowed to protest?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, and we just had a, we had a pretty elaborate cone system set up, just to keep them on the sidewalks. That was the most important part, just not to get involved into the, into the traffic flow.
They're not good yet.
Really? I'm like, I'm like swollen. Okay, I'll try to, I don't know. I'm not used to microphones. Can you hear me now? Would you say the protesters caused any more disruption than, let's say, a Fourth of, if, if, you know, Waldwick were to hold a Fourth of July or Memorial Day parade?
I don't know what you're trying to get at me.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just like, I'm just-
I know that.
Because she made all these claims, and I'm trying to see-
I wasn't the one that wrote it.
Yeah.
Okay? The only person who wrote it, I don't know.
Yeah.
The best thing for you to do, and I'm being very honest with you, send that person an email, see it to the mayor, to the administrator, and ask for your answers to be answered.
Yeah.
If they're not answered by the next meeting, which is November 13th, then we will make sure that they're answered for you.
Okay.
I mean, I, I wasn't there, I was, as I said, at home.
Right.
But what I was told by everybody was, it was peaceful.
Right. Honestly, I'm asking these questions to get on public record that, you know, she made all these claims, that I'm wondering if they were true.
I can't think of someone else why they would take-
Sure. Before we wrap up, if I may say, I don't know, I wasn't there at the protest, but I would have been there. Regarding the road closures, I would like to mention that my husband and two sons had not one, but two post-calls with cars on the corner of Franklin Turnpike and East Prospect. So I understand why they would have put some sort of closure there. It's kind of dangerous area. Also, last thing. When I had the opportunity to meet Senator Cory Booker 10 years ago, the only thing I said to him was that I appreciated that he made an effort to work across the aisle with Republicans. Mr. Mayor, I would like to say the same thing to you. You've shown a willingness to work across the aisle with Democrats. You and I might not agree on anything, but I appreciate you doing that.
I think it's, well, it's overdue.
Yeah. And I do hope that the information we just discussed dispels the notion that people like me are a bunch of radical leftists who attended the No Kings Protest on October 18th.
Thank you.
I know you've been waiting, sir.
He's first.
Must be a time.
Bolsonaro 31 Kennedy Drive, Waldwick, New Jersey. So the first thing I'm here to talk about is the same thing that the other people were here to talk about, the Kings, the Kings March. Okay. My, my experience and what I've heard and seen and happened to a family member is not that. Let's just say that. My experience is that somebody in my family turned off of North Street. By the way, I have video of them being in the street, not on the sidewalk. As the, as the, excuse me.
I expect the same respect.
You gotta, you gotta address us, please.
I'd like the same respect. Keep the comments to yourself. As it, as the vehicle was turning off of North Street, okay, onto Prospect, Franklin Turnpike, right up. The vehicle experienced with two children in the backseat of the car, windows were down that day, it was a very nice day. There were two children in the rear of the car, windows down, with a woman screaming, who was partially off the sidewalk, into the car, saying, "Does your husband treat you right?", talking to the driver. "Does your husband treat you like he should treat you? Or is he a man like some other person that they were protesting?" The children in the back of the car, who were three and five, asked the question, "Mommy, why are they yelling at us? Why are they saying bad things about the man who's our president?" It is our right to protest. It is our right to peacefully protest. Okay? It's not our right to get children involved in politics. They're children. They have enough of their life left to learn about that, which I'm sad to say is horrible, because politics these days have gotten toxic. As we can see, okay, like Tom said, there's things being said on Facebook about our mayor that are inappropriate. They're wrong. You know? Guys, I'm a, I'm a portioner of St. Luke's Church. I'm a Eucharistic minister. I believe in peace for all mankind, for everybody, and their right to speak, talk, and protest. Where it ends is where you get children who have no idea what's going on, and basically terrorize them with your voice. They don't understand. That's not right. In addition, I've known Tom since my kids were little, playing soccer together. This man is an honorable man. He wants what's best for Waldwick and the people of Waldwick. That's why he's reaching across party lines, doing what he's doing, to make the town a better town, to improve on the town, not to go backwards. My next question is, is there an ordinance in place for the amount of people who are allowed to protest in our town?
There is no ordinance in place.
Okay, do other towns have ordinances in place?
Yes. We've done some research, and there are ordinances in other towns.
Like Wyckoff, right?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. How do I get something proposed to move this march, if you're going to have a march, to limit it, to limit it to a certain amount of people? Okay? And then to move it off a thoroughfare where some of the people have claimed there was almost an incident? And I thanked the Waldwick PD immensely for doing a great job that day. But this is a travesty that this happened, okay? Because, you know why? This shouldn't happen in our small town. These marches happen in other places. They don't happen in Waldwick. So please, I would like to put forth something in any way or means possible to limit the amount of people, and to make sure that it is safe again, if we have a march again. Second thing, I hear stories about new things being brought up, about, you know, new developments and things of that nature in town.
Excuse me, is this about the redevelopment projects that we're working on?
Yes, it is, Tom.
I have to refuse myself.
Okay.
Would you sit?
So-
Would you just leave?
Sure. Let me know when I can continue.
Sit.
Also, being said, Facebook, whatever you may call, social media, talking to people in town, you know that Tom knows something, he doesn't want things to go forward, things of that nature, okay? I don't believe a word of it. I think Tom wants to make sure that everything is secure, that we have the financing to do these things, and that they're appropriately done. I'm really getting tired of people slandering our mayor's name, to be honest. It has to stop. You know what? I think people have to take a second look, and if you don't go to church, start going to church. Start believing in Jesus Christ. And when you want to pray, pray to Him to fix something. You have a right to speak. You don't have a right to do certain things in life, like that, which is take a man's name, who has served us greatly over the years, and destroy it, or try to destroy it. That's not what Waldwick's about. I would like to thank you all for letting me speak today. God bless you, and may the Lord always be with you. Thank you.
Partially. Go have a seat.
Yes, sir.
You're going to talk before that.
Basically, I'm just making an inquiry. Has progress been made on this here whole pilot thing that's been talked about? Because I'm wondering, has anything been agreed upon between the parties so far?
We're not at that point, in the process.
Okay. I would like to make a request, if possible, that this pilot thing go to a referendum. Okay? We did it for White's Pond, was $3.5 million at the time, which is probably $6 now, but I think if you've got close to 10,000 people in this town, okay, and all right, maybe the voting population, and I'm guessing is 6,000, okay? At that point, instead of putting six or seven people on the spot to make the decision, I believe that the residents of this town should have access to the information, the agreement, and everything that's been proposed, because there is a lot of speculation that the money's going to wind up if it doesn't go to the schools, and I know there's a lot of verbiage out there, I see it also. Okay? So I just sit back and think and come and ask a question. And I'd like to know if the lawyer gentleman, Mr. Bolsonaro's replacement, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, is it feasible to have a referendum on a pilot?
Yes, the board can, or, I'm sorry, the council can pick up a referendum on, you know, just about any topic that they wish to. You know, if that's something that the council wishes to do, that's certainly feasible.
Okay, I, I understand. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
If anybody's going to talk about redevelopment, please do it now, so I can-
Go on, take your seat, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sitting down? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ramondo, good evening, everybody. Joanne Mitchell. "In July, we had an excellent meeting that was on YouTube regarding the situation with our water system. And as I recollect from previous discussions, we had discussed having another meeting in October. As it is in very late in October, and I recognize that we've had a change of head count here, congratulations, Ms. Markey, when will we have an update meeting? Because I will be quite honest, ladies and gentlemen, at random times during the weekend, most frequently, and I have reported it on the website, I turn on my water and it's still coming out with a lovely caramel tinge to it. Can I please have an update where we are with our hydraulic engineering? Do we have a root cause analysis, and what action has been taken since July?"
So we're waiting still the results of that phase, and that's part of the agreement that we signed on to with, with H2M. So I've reached out to them during this transition and have asked for a follow-up meeting, so we can get a little bit more information on when this next meeting could happen.
Do we have a time- Do we have a timeframe for that?
I don't. I'm a month in. It was multiple inquiries to them, but it's not just about the meeting. I just need a little time to catch up on where we were with the agreement and check all the boxes and follow the progress that they've made so far. So, just ask your patience as we get them to commit to a date.
Do we have, do we know if we have any further information on the root cause of this problem and a remediation process for it? Of course, it was mentioned, there were several steps mentioned in the July video, which I'm very grateful for, but do we have any further information, any more recent reports?
We don't, and that's the deliverable that we're waiting on as part of this phase with their agreement.
All right. Thank you very much.
Should I go up?
You can go up. Oh. Nope.
Jim Schultz, 52 Harrison Avenue. Just a question on the redevelopment project. Again, I know we had an attorney that we're going to hire full-time. Has she been hired?
Yes, she was here for a meeting a few months ago, Anna Monforth. She's our redevelopment attorney.
Okay, has she done anything yet, or has there been any progress with what she's doing?
Yes, so she's hired, and she's our redevelopment attorney overseeing the process and, you know, everything related to Harrison.
Will she give a presentation anytime soon, what she's been doing?
She gave the presentation. The purpose of that was the education part, to inform council and public of what the process is related to redevelopment. We don't have her scheduled for any sort of progress report. What she's doing is standard in terms of...
Okay, so what will the next steps be after she gets done whatever she's doing?
So, there's formalities and paperwork that the borough is reviewing in relation to the redevelopment, you know, entity that's taking over that property. So, just a lot of formalities that go back and forth with anything related to building and to redevelopment.
Okay, are we sure it's going to be a pilot now, or we're not sure of that yet?
We're not at that point.
Okay. Do we know when we'll be at that point?
We know, and we've been made aware that they have requested a pilot, but we're not at the point where we've evaluated a pilot. A pilot has not been put together yet. Again, that's putting the horse before the car at this point.
Would it be possible, as the one gentleman brought up about a referendum, which is a good idea, would it be possible to have somebody come into the town and speak how the pilot programs work and educate the people and give everybody an idea of the good and the bad of the pilot programs?
That was part of Anna's presentation when she was here, and that is available online if anybody wanted to go back and take a look at it.
Okay. So, I'm going to beat a broken record again. Every other month, I just want to make sure we all understand the ramifications of a pilot program. I want to understand that if we have to go this route, you get as many people in the community involved as you can, because if we don't, we may end up like Hackensack or other towns that signed these and are now looking to get out of them. And I think the entire town, especially the Board of Education, needs to be involved to understand where we may be if we enlist one of these pilot programs. Thank you.[1518.71][1518.71](APPLAUSE).
Can I get up?
I have a question about the redevelopment. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.[1531.83][1531.83](LAUGHTER).
Catherine Hartman, 17 Cleveland Ave. As I've said in meetings before, I'm a social worker, and I used to be the director of a food security agency in Ridgewood that served Waldwick. About a third of the clientele that the agency in Ridgewood served were Waldwick residents, despite the fact that we were only a sixth of the total towns served. Given the upcoming food stamp, lack of money, SNAP halt, I'm wondering if there's been any either preparations by the town for food security for our more vulnerable residents, or if anyone would be willing to work with me or other people that are interested in food security to create some sort of temporary plan and maybe facility for collections, anything, so that we can support our more vulnerable residents?
That's a very good idea. Why don't you set up a committee with some of the residents?
So, we have a year-round collection in the foyer when you come downstairs.
For CFA, yeah.
So, Center for Food Action. We also give to, in Wyckoff, Families for Families.
Yes.
We rotate who we donate that to. It is a very successful program. We call for pickup of that bin almost every other week.
I think my concern is actually access. So, the guess is, is that the current established facilities are going to be beyond overrun to their capacity. Center for Food Action's incredibly difficult to get to. It's not accessible by public transportation. Families to Families is a little closer, but it's a much smaller organization. So, I was just hoping that maybe we could have something a little more accessible for our older adults, our kids, our people on disability, things of that nature, for our residents without the transportation. Yeah, yeah. I know that the county was actually quite surprised that we didn't have that, and I'd be happy to spearhead something, given the emergency coming.
Why don't you reach out to either Tatiana or Kelly and set up a meeting to come and talk to them about it?
Great.
And see what we have and what we could offer and how we could do it.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you.[1678.91][1678.91](APPLAUSE).
Do you want to say my name again? Angela Smith. Something I saw that involves students at high school, I don't know what town did it, but they did a food drive, and they covered their high school field with the bags of food that they collected. So, it brought the high school kids involved in a civically-minded, community-oriented way for Waldwick residents. So, if the discussion starts, that's something that I would suggest, if we can get our young people involved and do something fun like that. Thank you.
Why don't we talk to the Board of Ed?
Sure, I'll reach out to Mr. Mallow tomorrow and see if he's interested in something like that.
Good. Anyone else? We're going to have to go into close, but the thing is, I know a lot of people talking about this pilot program and talking about the referendum. I think the council should look into this very seriously. This is a lot of problems that might come up, but might not come up, and I want to make sure the residents, Board of Ed, everybody is knowing what's going on. I know it's all over Facebook that this is going on, this is going on once again. Everybody talks before they think. But I think we should talk about with the attorney, with Craig, about maybe doing a referendum about this. I think a referendum is the best way. The last time, as one of the residents said, a referendum was put through by Mr. Brenning of White's Pond. And the residents had an opportunity to voice their opinion. The residents had an opportunity to tell us what they felt. And even though we're seven of us, you know, listening and doing the best we could for you, you're the ones that live here also. Do I have a motion to go into close? Motion by Mark, second by Joe. All in favor? All the votes. Good night, everyone. Have a safe and happy...